Sebastian.
Yeah.
One's enough, trust me.
Cam, cam. Example. Examples. Five, six minutes. I'm looking at it.
She's off.
I want to take a lot of time.
Well, yeah, so here.
I got to get my hands.
Be clinical. I am the last one. My door shut locked.
I've seen my little feet.
What was the number? And then. She was in the. Old place about. What'd you say? She was down. I see her.
She can't.
Yes. Looks like it's camera. I just got. I don't have a girlfriend. I've been ladies.
All six. You know that's good. Just do what I can. You can be all my. Basically. Turn around. That's songs. Thanks. Don't be coming me off. I'm going to go over them. I don't. I don't see them back here. He wears the shovel tip. He says, I said, what's going on? Usually when something bad happens or something's going on and he thinks it's ready to deal with. He said nothing, just here. Just ready to be. He says, hey, thank you. He said, he's wanting to face me. Use your maker.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Blessings, right? Thank you, God, for this very country that we do live in and we thank you for the blessings that you have stole from us each day. And we thank you for the city that we live in. As we think tonight, we just ask for guidance and wisdom in making decisions that better our community and those that live in. Of these things, we ask your holy and precious name.
Everybody know the minutes?
I make a motion to accept September twenty seventh.
September twenty seventh? With all the others. Think we just did them all last time this thing? No one has any objection, will they? Twenty eights. Twenty eights.
Yep.
So we'll do Stan. Did they call two second? Oh, three second. We don't have multiples like this anymore.
Mr. Mitchell.
Oh, thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am, and the council. The reason I'm here is to talk about work readiness, communities initiative. And I've got for you several things to look at. I think that, Chris, you've got the resolutions for everyone, right?
Okay.
I've got a couple of different things. I'm going to pass these out to you all and also to the audience. I just hope they'll be here tonight, so I just made several topics for you, obviously. Go ahead and make one, pass it down. If you couldn't, well. This man. This just explains what it is that we're doing with this and how it's been stated as well as all the other communities in Pennell County. There is a program through the Kentucky Economic Development Council about two years old and relates to workforce development. Everything relates to workforce and workforce development as far as economic development is concerned. It's no longer just a matter of sewer and water and land, those types of things. It's more than anything else these days, a matter of the quality of life in the community, the education level, the workforce level, and those types of things. That's what really matters to industry, looking for new locations. Now, there's certification programs that state put together and it's one of the ones that other states have done, which sets a standard for workforce development throughout community and deals with, like I said, education, it deals with the recruitment and economy and several other factors. Pennell County is part of this program. We are vying for this certification within it for about ten years now. And we are very, very close to being in the application, but I want to come and sit with the council and talk about this and get approval from the council to be included as part of the leadership team and submitting the application to Franklin. And I gave. Is there another one? Yeah, right here. What I want to do, I want to take you through this real quick and just point out a couple highlights. This is part of a PowerPoint that the state gives for many kind of communities, but I just want to point out a couple of things to you about this. On page two, this was last year. There's a map. And on this map, people see that Pennell County is white. All the other communities around us, all of Mead Robinson and Helen, all of those other communities are already taking the program. And we're just now getting started on our certification part of it, but they're already in progress and they're already certified. So what this means to the state is that they have competitive advantage over us in terms of recruitment of industry, recruitment of business, and those types of things for the community. And this didn't look good because we're the only one to get down into bluegrass. So that was what participated because I'm starting in part of this program. Flip to the next page where it's a site selection. When employers are looking at areas to go to, these are the top five selection criteria. Number one is still workforce. Twenty-five years or so ago, it might have banned property or it might have banned transportation access. And it's not that they're unimportant, it's just that there's a little playing field. Everybody's got transportation, everybody's got land now, that every community's got a set of parts of one type or another. Twenty-five or thirty years or so ago, maybe they didn't. So you have to look deeper, again, to dive deeper and be more selective. And folks are having to up their game, communities are having to do more things than they did in the past just to keep up with this. It's like, it's not like I'm a basketball team. Maybe forty years ago, only one team had a seven footer. Now everybody's got a seven footer. Now you're looking at guards and you're looking at folks who can do multiple tasks on the court. Many different factors come into play where that forty years or so ago, they didn't. Transportation infrastructure, growth opportunities, market access, customized incentive packages in terms of all the different parts of this now. Customized incentive packages, communities are waiting certain types of fees or taxes or other things. They are doing things with regard to infrastructure improvements, road improvements, all these types of criteria and it's that they are going to set themselves apart from other communities that are looking to attract as well. And then on down to the page where it talks about this program and the criteria, the non-criteria.
Hey, one's a dog trash.
So what we're looking at, we're looking at in our application, first of all, we're looking at high school graduation levels, national career readiness certificates. These are certificates you have with regard to industry, community commitment, educational attainment, GED, soft skills development. Does anyone on council know what soft skills development is? Anyone knows what soft skills are? Okay, what soft skills are? Employees that show up on time, employees that are courteous, that are courteous, employees that do not end a sanitation after a business break is actually saying, no problem. Employees that have good work ethic. And those types of things are soft skills. Employees that don't have to camp change, that can answer a telephone, that are good talking with customers and their employer. Those are soft skills, much, much more important today than it was in the past for a variety of reasons that we don't have time to get into tonight. But soft skills are very, very important. I know those of you with business brain, you know, it's an attest that, you know, you get that person working for you that's got good people skills, that shows up on time and those have salad, those have to be discussed from nice, they are a commodity in this world today. And that's what soft skills speaks to. And then here in. You've noticed that the first three of the four is all in with education. I said before in other groups that I've talked with as well, I said, truly, education is our number one asset or keeps big in Pennell County with regard to our quality of life and recruitment of business and industry. It's not me, it's the superintendent of health construction, it's the school board, it's the votes in education because they're a friend of the next generation. I saw some statistics a few days ago about Kentucky. And in every instance where you have poor educational levels, you have many other poor factors such as lower incomes, work, health, more instances of diabetes, more instances of families in crisis. Everything relates from one way or another to education. That's why communities care so much about it and that's what they're measuring with us.
I have some numbers on my car with anybody. I think it's like sixty-five or seventy and a company is looking into an area and they'll look at their skilled workforce. The number is very high, above everything else, all of the skilled workforce. Some of that, you know, we've talked about and a couple of other things with. Doing something with. Getting people. It's in the words about transportation here, what we have to count here and it's translation to a new one here for employers. That's skills and the works and we're soon to get that going. It goes hand in hand with what was built and what's been. Like I said, companies, that's another one.
Now, there's on the last page we want to look at, there'll be this page here where it talks about where we rank. And all the, on the basic criteria, here's where we rank is that our high school graduation rate is at ninety-four percent, which, so we're above, we're above the minimum criteria. Our educational attainment, and by educational attainment, what we mean is the number of our population, twenty-five years or older, who have at least an associate degree. We're at twenty-four point three percent. The. The base level for certification is twenty-five percent, so we're seven hundredths away and we have work to do in that area. Internet availability is a hundred percent and the national credential, NCRC, is a three point eight and that satisfies what the state wants to look at right now. So what I've been doing for the last six months is going around, I've gone to the other legislative jurisdictions, I've gone through roads, the chain, the lines, and I'm getting letters of commitment and that's what these are, just a generic letter saying they agree with workforce development in our application. And I've been getting resolutions signed, we've got thirteen, I think, resolutions signed by various groups in Pennell County right now. Fallow is the last that we'll be doing and then we're going to be finishing the application in this committee. But I want to come tonight and share with you the rewall and get a commitment to be a part of this process. There are two basic certifications that any community can get. One is work ready certified, where you need all the criteria, which we don't, and another is work ready certified in progress, which is where you have three and four, but you lack a little bit on one, that's where we are. So we will be going after our work ready in progress certification in January. We'll be submitting the application, this is October, I'd like to submit the application by the end of the month now that we will have, we're having this meeting tonight and when everything else is got finished, go ahead and submit. And then there'll be a presentation myself and a few others will have to go too with the cabinet for economic development go through this. And hopefully if they accept this, then we'll be certified. Here's why it matters to all of whether you're above Fallow or Pennell County, is what the economic development cabinet is telling us is that if they have six communities and they're all roughly equal in many different factors, in population, they all have industrial parks, they all have roughly the same type of workforce and those types of things, education level, but three of the communities are certified and three aren't, they're not going to go to the three that aren't. So right off the bat, not having this is putting this behind the eight ball. And there's no money involved, all it is today is certification. All it says is you achieve a certain level of work ready in your community. And all it does is it tells the state that you've done all these things and have an advanced level of commitment to your community, to education, to work readiness in Pennell County. And we will have to keep working on this as we go with this. But for tonight, we have three things. We have a resolution, we have these letters of support, which if you've read it, all they are is a generic letter, everyone is signing pretty much the same letter, maybe that I agree with work ready. And then the other is why I didn't write it, I'll just give the assignment sheet for the council. But basically on the community commitment part of it, that's where this falls, is it's showing that we have a large number of folks in the community that are committed to this project and they agree with it. On applications to other communities, they might have three or four resolutions, they might have fifteen or twenty letters of support. Right now, I think I'm at around a hundred and forty. With you all and those in the audience that would choose to build this out tonight, I will be around a hundred and fifty. And there is an organization, there's an entity that's working on this, it's the Work Ready Committee. I think there's about fifteen or twenty folks, mostly educators and some others from business and industry that are a part of this. We've met formally, I think, three times over the last year and the subcommittees have met only two or three times. It's not a committee that meets every month, it's not a committee that meets just to meet when they have, they have something really important to do. But our work is nearing an end right now and I've come to share with the council tonight to be a part of this. I wonder if any questions on what we're doing? I wonder if any questions on what we're doing?
I'd like to have a question, I think, ask the resolution.
Who sends out the certification? Where does it come from?
It comes from the economic development cabinet.
Downstairs, frankly?
Yes, yes.
And then they send it out to the, you know, like for instance Toyota or whatever. Or looking for cars or something, you know?
They will include us among the communities that they will show based on this certification. Now that doesn't mean that we're automatically going to get all the site visits. What it does mean though is that whereas before, we didn't even get a look, now we're going to at least get a look. Whether it's us or whether it's the northern part of the county or wherever it is. We're at least going to get a look whereas before perhaps we didn't. And this is something I'll have to maintain as we go along. That was a good question. Any other questions about what we are doing?
Are you going to have classes to teach soft skills to those who are already graduating from high school and in the workforce and that general does a lot with the adult education program?
I can wish that the chamber was actually going, they were looking at having a speaker come in that deals with soft skills training. But my office could possibly be something like that as well. Might be right. Right now what my office is doing is it, as many of you know, my job description got changed last year. I assumed all responsibility for industrial development, recruitment, small business development, and entrepreneurism in addition to all the other things that I was already doing. And we've had through three seminars on small business dealing with how to start a small business and how to be an entrepreneur and how financing works, all those types of things. But I can see soft skills training being a part of this. But I can also see it being a part of what tourism would do. Because soft skills is a very important part of tourism. How do you interact with customers? How do you relate to the public? How do you follow through with this? All very important in tourism, business and business.
And I think it answers that. There's something, a program that's kicking on that's kind of tied into this. And that will teach more skill people how, you know, these just basic concepts. I think that would add to yours off soon. Just need a session.
All right, thank mayor. I'm.
Now I think you needed your son and she had it in her.
Oh, no.
Maybe your son had him sign these papers at work for you or?
I can get something from a weather in the minutes or something like that. That doesn't come out. What I would like though is that if you all could sign this, that would be very, very helpful. Shows my part that I was here and that you all were here and did that stuff. If you all, if you all would do this, this would be helpful.
And also you just want mayor and council, right?
No, and for the public as well. Anybody who wants to just date it and sign it, I would be very, very appreciative. Whether you did it tonight or break it to my office. But all this really makes a big difference. For example, when I went to Rotary, everybody in Rotary, all 20 of them, they all signed this. When I went to fiscal court, they had an unusually large crowd that night for something else and they all signed it. So I had 25 of these just from one meeting at fiscal court. So I would be very appreciative if anybody here would sign these.
What's the organization I represent?
I'm sorry?
Organization?
Citizen.
Okay.
Citizen.
Want to measure?
Citizen.
So you can take these out?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Do you want me to take the resolution tonight?
I'll use it.
I can give you a couple of copies more. I'll give you a couple of copies more. Can I, can't? Can I copy later? Thank you all.
So now did you reach 150, Phil?
Sam?
Did you reach 150, just what we're asking for here?
I don't know. See who else, I'll find them together. If there's anybody else, if the crowd's got one, then I'll take all of those. Mayor, thank you for allowing me to come tonight and talk about this. I'll keep you informed as the hours go. I'm going to do this. Any other questions about this or anything else related to economic development in the community?
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Dunlon, you're a partner there. Gary's going to start picking up leads, the fourth member. They will be stopping by your house on Monday, Wednesday and Fridays to pick up leads.
I work with somebody.
I don't know.
But we already got.
They're getting a bunch of lead, I think everybody's going for it. Also too, we had another bar break down here on the railroad tracks at CSX. We had to fix it in the day. I don't know if they'll stay long, but they were down just a little. Over on Todd's side, we had the water pump there go off or down. The switch pump, just back up and running, everything is good. Everybody has their thing from Sherry about trick or treat on the 29th and 6th day. We're making the phone calls that trick or treat has been canceled. Trick or treat has not been canceled. I don't know why they said that, but the police are out, they've had some wrecks and suddenly got bit by a dog with a streaker very bad by a German shepherd. So they are out. So anybody have any questions on Gary?
Yeah, we have three police officers, that is.
You just met Chris Kelly?
How many?
We have five and a half.
Five and a half. The police never stops us.
Yeah, we have five and a half.
It'll be half in a time.
Right. Well, what we're doing is Jacob will go first. When Jacob is done, Chris will go after Jacob comes back. So that way we have a team roll in. They've been very busy over the weekend. They were really busy Friday and Saturday. So they've been doing a really good job, they've been here. They've been out on calls, trespassing, just little things, so you'll see them out and about. They've been out checking on the kids at school, how they're playing soccer and I don't know, they play football right now, I guess. They're playing out there, sitting out there, checking, make sure everything's okay. So I can see them say hello to them, make them feel welcome.
Do they want to put the place you call your box?
I guess.
This month or?
Yeah, we probably have tomorrow or Thursday, I guess, right for them, anyway. Greg said that, you know, a couple of years ago, so he's off, so he doesn't have all that. He's off for that today.
On Fourth Street, I guess it was the telephone company that put in that big box there. It's not all.
Oh, one of them did the gas leak on?
I don't know, but it's big and bulky, get off.
Yeah, they cut the gas line.
Are they going to take that big box out? Do they get that approved? Did they just do it? Because I'm just like, it sits out like, the sword's on it and it's just horrible over there.
Yeah, it's pretty decided, yeah. Actually, they have a gas line and they didn't ask permission from Duke Energy to even dig. And then the next thing I know, a couple of days later, the box is, I thought they were putting in a new line that's what they were putting it up.
They did it from since they don't.
Since they don't.
Is that to do with their fiber optics stuff?
Yes.
Then isn't that crude? I mean, you want the ordinance on them to do the fiber optics stuff? I know, but the ordinance is to say it's a big box in the middle of the side.
They gave them rights to do what they had to do to get the fiber optics through. So I mean, if that's what that is, I don't know.
They've got drugs and parts on there. I mean.
They could put on both.
Isn't this a lot?
That's, it's kind of called a city code on that. And I'm telling you, that, have you seen it? Has anybody else seen the big box on Fourth Street?
This thing about it, the thing about how it's probably about that way.
Looks like it's been put on both or something there.
I don't know if it, I thought they did it because they hit the gas line, so I thought never I seen that. No, I didn't really think about it. I just know that they were, they were working on the gas line or working, they hit the gas line and there wasn't anything until I guess a week later. So, yeah. But they're also out here in the holes. You see that down in the holes, they're running the fiber optics underneath the ground. So you'll see them with a man that was also, a manufacturer over here, they're running that one. So I'd say you know about the Fourth Street.
Yeah, we can call them. Yeah.
Because the pole get broken from Tyler's house.
I don't know, she's been asking about that. We don't know. Nobody knows anything about that. I know it's falling apart at the bottom, we have the number on it and you can call them.
I don't know, but it's just maybe the pole got bad and the way the line made it.
I should just hope you couldn't hit it.
I didn't know.
Yeah, it looks like it's been hit because Chris and I were there the other day looking at it. Because I've asked her, what happened to it? Don't I get anything back? I even asked Tyler, he said he don't know.
Underwater treatment here, so it's about the need to repair or replace a chlorine analyzer. How much, what does that entail?
They have not given support on that yet. They are supposed to give support before we do anything like that.
I think Tyler's working on getting numbers on that.
I think they were trying to get information on that. As you see, we've had a lot of learning, we've had a lot of busting. Out here I was pushing a lake Friday. They had one out there, they had one up on Chad Lane, Chad Lane. It was two days trying to get it, it's actually a second hand yard. It's.
From like trying around and everything?
Yeah, and what happened up there is when they put the pipe in, the pipe actually went through underneath the ground, underneath the road, and then it goes up and then back down and then coming down. I don't know who did that, but it's not right.
Are we accounting for water loss? I don't see it on there either.
Dawn is working on.
She, we mentioned to her that she wanted to report water loss. So she didn't currently have that, but Greg says that he said something that they've done. So they'll have to get with us and then we have to do it with our billing. Because you have to compare the two, whatever they probably produce and then what we build for. So we've got to all get together and come up with a way to do that, to be able to report that for you all. But Smitty said that they, Greg said that they had done that before. So we're going to do it, but they don't know and Dawn is not familiar with it. So we've got to come up with something.
Drago? Mark?
I see that they replaced the leak iron. Is that danger at all now? So we still got some work.
You still have two over here, one right about the charge down on Lincoln Street.
And. When we gonna get the snowsack itself? Emergency snowsack, they, you know, we did this four years ago. Four years ago.
There's some up there.
There's some. There's one on.
Mayor.
A big one, yeah.
Yeah, one. The ordinance says over the streets and everything.
There's ten when we go out. They started down here in LA.
You know, what I'm saying is that there's going to be snow this year. And I hate to see this.
I've mentioned to you again.
And the snowbath, you know?
He says it didn't really help basically, but he's put it where he thought that they would. But I can ask him again to see.
Well, you know, they got it mapped out where they want it mapped, you know?
I mean, I have ran by Gary, didn't do it that much.
I hate to see somebody say, oh, my street's not clean and this person's car is parked out there and nothing's been done.
Speaking of maybe, right across from the currier minute, kind of diagonal right in front of Carlisle Champs, well, there's a ditch there, where the sidewalk is. Kind of safe, let it drive either across street or cross street. Look at that. And we need to start repairing sidewalks. Sidewalks are getting in bad shape.
Do we repair sidewalks? I thought.
Roll up from here.
We put them in that the residents are going to take care of.
Yeah, the thing is how it's said in the ordinance is we provide the labor and material at our cost. Well, the labor's free materials at our cost to the citizens.
Right, they pay the material.
Yeah, they pay the material.
I knew it for something that.
Which is still cheaper, they just go out and buy it and redo it themselves. It's still cheaper because you get the material cheaper.
Anything else on, oh, hi. Are you good? What?
I'm looking for water, studying drinking water. Other than the recommendations, are there any issues?
Oh, we have to get any money.
Oh, that's.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, but I mean, are there issues?
That'll do. So we're rolling. All right. Now the open business, we have opening cameras to do this. Mr. Michael?
Okay, we have two red bulbs.
Okay, tell them we have one before.
Sure.
We have the same thing basically you guys had last time. We'll throw out the information that Hammer people, at Hammer's location there, was interested in the property. They've done an environmental study on it and they were advised by their people to not proceed any further due to the lead and things where it was used for the gun shooting range and things like that. However, since then I have gotten calls with these people still following up to see who's putting in bids and things like that. So I'm going to say they're probably still interested, but they just don't want to make anything for it. But that's my personal thinking because they are still in contact. But they no longer will be putting in a bid, so theirs is not one of these two. So all we have is what we've got in it, the $45,000 from the deed. We've got about $3,000 in the survey. I'd say like 400 just advertising and whatever. I mean, I think the last vigil that was 57, I think it was $57,000 that you put down. So whatever you get today, you're all screwed.
Saul Beck's made an offer, has been out, he has $62,502. We have one from Joyce Becker. Those are the only two we got. They both came in today, in Tyler. They both came in within Tyler.
Yes.
I move this up, Hammer, Brian, and Saul Beck, $62,502. I second.
Ron?
Yeah, I was checking the price per acre there. We're good, I'm good?
You're good?
Yes.
Michael?
Yeah.
Next one is the clean property.
We did not receive any bids on the clean property. So you did that the last time, doesn't that mean that we can now sell it outright?
We can do whatever the city pleases in the best interest of the citizens.
But now it's a terrible, right?
Sure.
I mean, that's a bigger property, it's a little bit more until 2000. I don't know if you guys have one to get a realtor, but at least we need to do something on it.
Well, I would like to see a committee kind of formed or a group to get together and see, get some ideas and ways to go about it and.
I know we've had one gentleman that's interested in a portion of it, but he's not called back this time. But I don't think he was kind of interested in doing the whole bidding process. But we might be able to get with him and if we spent gen office six extra times, it's just some of six or three, but he's just one who might be able to bring something to you all. If you can get a committee together and do that as well, it needs a little bit more looked into than.
That and a business proposal to submit to businesses on the property. I would like to interact with them in a friendly business.
You?
I don't know, they're not, maybe they're giving to them because what, what, $18,000? From the dollar pocket? And taxes, utilities, and all that?
You know what you name for the clean property, you want to give it away?
No, if somebody wants to, I know, but we'll get it. If some corporation wants to come in here and open up, they need to name their land. We don't name our land.
Well, when that happens, we're definitely looking at it, but I don't know.
You know, just throwing out some ideas there because you're going to pay for that and tax. You know, just throwing out some ideas there, because you're gonna pay for that in taxes every year, you know, like I said.
We...
Generates about eighteen thousand, not including employees that they employ.
And they helped about three of them that need a bid.
So, yeah.
Well, we all agree, well, seriously, if somebody's interested in bringing something in, that's a no brainer.
All right, next one is for the paving and milling bids.
We have two. First one is an envelope, uh, Len Riegler Blacktop, Lawrence, Kentucky.
I don't know. What was the name of the envelope?
Len Riegler, R-I-E-G-L-E-R, Blacktop Company. Um, I'll read the conditions first. He proposes asphalt surface of one and one quarter inch thickness after compacting. Uh, pricing is based upon performing all work in the spring of two thousand seventeen. Prevailing wages are not included in our bid. Prevailing wages, uh, law in Kentucky that if, uh, a project is two hundred, is, is either bid or estimated at two hundred and fifty thousand or more, uh, they have to provide, uh, prevailing wages to their employees. Prevailing wages are set regionally by, um, Department of Labor Kentucky. Uh, it says, this is an ongoing bid, some streets are removed, we will have to adjust unit pricing for mobilization expenses. This quote has become part of the contract office. Then they go down to the, uh, the listed streets. West Shelby Street Prep, driveway and pay, three hundred and twenty, three thousand one hundred and twenty-two feet in length, thirty feet in width, ten thousand four hundred and seventy, pardon me, ten thousand four hundred and seven square feet, seven hundred and fifteen tons. Unit price at seven hundred dollars for a total of fifty-two thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars, ninety-two cents. Robbins Mill and Pave, six hundred and ten feet by twenty-five feet wide, sixteen hundred and ninety-four square yards, hundred and sixteen tons, hundred and seven dollars per, twelve thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars, seventy-six cents. Uh, we can enter this into the record, but, uh, if you add it all up together, uh, the total bid is three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars and seventeen cents. The way that the bid was, uh, as I read it, the way they proposed it, if you decide to take some of those streets out, they would have to recalculate. So my recollection is you don't have that much available, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. That's, that's not included in the billing. Some of it... Yeah, some of it's not included in billing. For example, they have one, uh, Robbins Mill and Pay, uh, there's three sections of Robbins. Uh, Wells Alley Mill and Pay, Fourth Street Mill and Pay, Maple Avenue Mill and Pay, Earl Avenue Mill and Pay. So there's several, uh, instances that they proposed to bill and then pay. I can read that whole thing if you like it too, but seeing as it adds up to third print, thirty-eight thousand, I didn't think that you would want that. Did I, you all can look at it. If we chip in several thousand dollars, maybe. Then we have, uh, Mango Construction Company from Bartstown, Kentucky. Cover letter, Mark Margot, Mango Construction Company respects this mintsy patent bids for milling, resurfacing of various streets. Mango's bid includes mechanically sweeping of roads, applying tackless coat, tackless tat coat, haul, mowing, and milling of specified streets, and batuminous surface area driven by the City of Fallow. Should Mango's construction bid be accepted by the Fallow City Council, please forward a copy of the minutes to show awarded work to be performed. They have a bid tabulation sheet similar to the other one.
Let's start that mess.
Is that the one that done it the last time? They provide specific inch and specific belt ability for Kentucky rim work. Uh, they didn't specify on the cover letter what the thickness is, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through these. There are, uh, several streets, Robbins, Monroe, Howser, West Shelby, Wells Alley, Woolery Street, Robbins Street, two sections of Robbins Street, Broad Street, Fourth Street, Second Street, Maple, Russell Wire Hill, Thomas Lane, Julia and Court, Earl Avenue, and Shelby Street. Okay, depth, one point two five, so they're all, uh, an inch and a quarter. I think that was, was that what the other one told me?
Yeah.
Um, the way they, uh, specify that there's milling and, uh, on both sections of Robbins Street, uh, West Shelby Street, Wells Alley, two more sections of Robbins Street, uh, to be milled and paved. Uh, a section of Fourth Street to be milled and paved. Maple Avenue, milled and paved. Thomas Lane, Julia and Court, Earl Avenue, all proposed to be milled and paved. Those two, last two, Thomas Lane, Julia and Court, involves driveways also. So that total...
Driveways for what?
Probably the approaches that are running. I would just have the...
Entrance to the driveway.
Entrance to the driveway, but that's what I was asking, yes. We would not be permitted by law. Their, uh, their total bid for the, uh, surfacing is a hundred and fifty-five thousand, three hundred and five dollars, fifty-four cents. Milling is fifty thousand, fifty-one dollars and eight cents. For a total of two hundred and five thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixty-two cents. Now, nothing on their bid, uh, says that they would have to rebid if you only selected streets. Uh, matter of fact, the, the, the last line of the letter says, please forward a copy of the minutes, show the awarded work to be performed. So it sounds like they anticipate that you may not award it for all these streets.
Yeah, well, it's all three for sure.
Maybe that's, that's a lot of streets, that's something like...
It's a lot of streets for our street though.
I mean, that's the same.
Hey, let me get all those streets, all those streets for, uh, two or five.
Yeah, absolutely.
Now, there's a hundred and fifty-five thousand of, uh, eighteen and fifty thousand worth of milling. There's quite a bit of milling. And they're gonna put the ring and the marker silver in that, like, that it's supposed to be last time? I didn't look at it that closely. Mill it down, they won't have to.
Yeah.
If they mill it down, they won't have to.
I, I don't know.
Well, it'll be my whip then.
Yeah.
Absolutely. So, you wanna make motion with...
I'm not making motion with Mango's bidding. I second that.
Just for clarification, is that for the entire bid or the...
Entire bid.
Stanley, you second?
Yes. Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, yes. Sounds like Mango would do.
Stand a second. When are they proposing to do this in the spring also?
I think that idea.
I wouldn't mind if they started on our avenue tomorrow.
Yeah.
I don't know, hell.
They got enough...
No, you don't want...
I don't want that, yeah. But that is avenue, bro.
No, it's...
Yeah, I know it gets the bridge. Brian ain't got that into it.
All right, now we're gonna surplus the truck. First one, a truck. All right, Gary has a bucket truck.
Oh, I think he has one.
Oh. Gary has a nineteen eighty-nine bucket truck that we can all remember. See the lights or... Oh, I'm sorry, I'm lost.
Okay, you need your special...
I know that it's a diesel. And I know every once in a while, uh, Stanley says something about it. I looked it up today for a used one on, on, online, they go from anywhere from ten thousand to fifteen thousand. And Gary also said to understand that when this truck was bought, it was either bought in, what did he say, nineteen ninety or two thousand, somewhere near there. So it was used when we got it, so it's still a used truck, but it's still a big truck. But we just can't use it anymore because of, uh, OSHA.
He said that it won't pass inspection, you know, is there anything?
You know, the hard inspections that we have, yeah.
So good that I keep on it unless we got the new one. Since we don't ever use it.
Where's the rest of our surplus that, like, when we did that list?
It's still there, we still got the list, I don't know if all the stuff is still there.
Two bikes are on.
I know that there's, seen a bike from here.
Yeah, bikes, there should be some bikes that belong to the Bicks. They belong to the Bicks.
That's one, uh, Susan was talking about, that the city had not the grants for.
Right, uh, well, mm, yeah, kind of sort of, they didn't, half and half, I think. The Bicks paid for half and they got the grant.
Susan also said that the city will all the work on, right, and all the work on, so that like, never hear out of us.
They did, something like the city did, something like, that's part of the city?
Yeah, and you did this for, like, yeah, they have the bicycles.
But you're saying it wasn't to Bicks though?
Well, it's probably the Bicks program.
Right.
For the individuals who participated in that program purchased the bikes.
They purchased the bikes.
My god.
Yes.
Because I was under the impression that you got them through a grant.
It was a half and half.
And those people paid for the other half?
Yeah.
The individuals paid those?
But Susan also said that all the work that's been done on the bicycles has come through the city, is what she said.
What all the work? You're not lying there.
I haven't heard anything that they paid for anything, so I thought it was just all grants. So, because I think she's the one that come in here and want the bikes back or something. So we know, because she wants the bikes.
Right, yes.
She don't have any bids on the budget here? Back, back to the budget.
Yeah.
Bucket truck, let me, uh,
Please, sir.
interject, uh, the, the, the Surplusing Statute convisions that you adopt a resolution which contains information. Uh, Chrissy has prepared one of those and I'd like to read it down. He'll give you all the information, you can read on this particular one. Uh, this is City of Fallow's Resolution two thousand sixteen, next number. A resolution declaring a nineteen eighty-nine Chevy Kodiak bucket truck intended and used by the City of Fallow's Maintenance Department has surplus to the needs of the city, thus in the public interest to dispose of saying because of vehicle operable, however won't pass inspection, presently takes up needed storage space, is not economical for the city to pay upkeep, either repairs, and is surplus to the needs of said city, and authorizing direct end of sale of said vehicle by public auction website. Uh, Section one specifies the D I N number of the truck. Uh, Section two specifies that at the time of acquisition, purchase, or use by the City of Fallow's Maintenance Department. And then Section three declares that it's in public interest to declare the vehicle surplus because it's no longer needed and costly, not economical to keep up. Section four directs the City clerk to advertise the sale in accordance with KRS four twenty-four, public auction website. And then it just says this resolution will be in effect once you all adopt it. So if you would like to adopt it, you can do that by motion.
And then they get the thing off those websites, they don't charge us anything, um, the fees go to the buyer. And I think you were okay on state thing, you said we were good on that part of it. So if we try this with this one, the only thing I'm gonna probably need to know is what would be, now, need to set a limit, I would think, that we will let me, or approve it for. Now, if they was to go over that, it'd be good, but I mean, something that I could probably put on there, that would be the amount, would be the less you would take.
Would they all allow you to do a reserve?
They'll, I mean, that's your max amount, you let your, for sale amount.
In other words, uh, if you, if you set five thousand dollars, it's like, then it's four, we don't have to take it.
Right. Yeah. So that's what I would need you all to tell me, so that we can try this and see how it works and get it out to more people than just in our outlook. I mean, like Gary says, you let, we get five hundred dollars, but I think five hundred dollars for this truck's a full up. I mean, so...
You do have to advertise in the envelope, that you're advertising, that you're...
Yes, that will be like the website.
And give the website as well.
Yes. But, I mean, you said it was on the blue book for ten to fifteen, but... I mean, I would go on the higher end if I don't go, we don't go. I mean, I don't know, but that's up to you all, but...
We have one shipper on the back of it, sixty-four thousand. So, it goes in like, you know, we don't know.
What do you all think? I mean, I know usually when things go in here, they go pretty low, so...
Yeah, it needs to be reserved.
You know, so...
Have you seen one of those with Gary, Robby?
Well, like I said, Gary, he told me a couple thousand dollars, that's what Gary told me. So, that's why I'm definitely, well, we looked it up as far as blue book and things like that, and then you're kind of going on your own, what you think. Or what you would take in here, so I think what you would take here, we can put it on the website and see what happens.
It's a ten, he said ten, that won't be ten thousand?
I go from ten to, ten to fifteen thousand.
Better shape, I mean, this one's not, this one's not past inspections, so... I think that much, but I would wanna see it go for five hundred dollars.
No, not even, not even, I felt it was out. I mean, it's already, well, that is. And I think that, what, a six thousand?
I think five.
Three, four, and people like that.
Eight?
Eight is the number in the hand.
Eight, yeah.
And you can always, if you don't get anything, you go down the road.
We'll set eight and I'll figure out a... That sounds good to me, and then if you continue. Okay, so I make a motion somewhere.
We need a motion on a jury, what you know?
Yeah, you would include your motion or reserve.
Yes.
Whatever you say.
That you're a motion.
I can make it my motion.
No, second?
Second.
All right, we'll see how this goes.
Ready?
Yes.
Make sure that you put in the, they have to pick up. And stuff, all the...
As well, where he adds all that stuff.
Eh, yeah.
Actually, use it all over.
I'll get all right information.
So, George, is there anything you need to say?
So, my question, is that all finished?
That's it. That was it. Give me a little bit to get together, I want you to have approved it, make sure we're good for us, how we legally post it and everything, so, um... Give me a minute.
I'm sorry? That's it, so the motion's on her?
I'll make a motion that we do.
Okay. All right, everybody ready?
Aye.
All right. Everybody have a line, save me a moment, please?
Thank you.
So, if I have a bucket truck, I'll go on the door, I'll one half it, right? Isn't that, that's what I mean, to be, uh, to be, uh, talking to that, right? You pay the shoe, move down, wait, wait, four, five, four, seven, eight, nine, ten, I'll work up. You'll like... Kurt, would you come somewhere, your boy, yours, your little, your report?
Uh, good evening.
How are you doing?
Very good.
He's like, I'm here.
Yeah.
Probably not all the way there.
Oh, I can't see him, I can't see him. Okay. We're probably not like the people that these, and I, he's actually, he's, 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 he's...
Oh, did you get with the.
Well, I'm gonna get it.
Get your exit drill.
Yeah, I hope so. Started with the, uh, the, 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 of what, pretty much they wrote down.
Yeah.
And then, and then, and then, and then, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know. Uh, Mrs. Willis, the hand is none of that.
Yeah.
Cause she brought, she came to us. She was on her porch, and rated her five hundred, and just came to her. And ended this, so she was not, so she was not supposed to raise her face, but it's not like.
Yeah.
I heard this, and I know it's not that. It's a lawyer.
Slag her, yes. It's probably always coming down your. That's what we're asking.
Yeah. It lets you be. Probably.
No, I haven't seen your pictures.
I know, I know, I do that.
I put it on your body.
Yeah, like, I was like, I don't know.
I'm finished, yeah, I put that. It's the big stuff. They drop and stuff. Those are all valid.
Yeah, I mean, it's like everybody. Where's the man?
Uh, I mean, it's not published by anybody, it's written on a different name on a piece of paper, like, it's. She's got more, she's got.
Yes, actually.
She, she, she. And that's really what matters, back there. And, uh. Uh, you know, I don't know. She's a little, she's. A lot of them, they're not, they're not.
See, now that's a matter of. They're right.
Yeah, I know.
But, you know, that, I was just, I was saying, I don't know what to make of it, but, what, that's. That's outstanding. Well, the other person.
All that's.
We, I'm not.
They should be focusing. That's the big thing with this, you know, you don't have a setup. People can see it, Gary, I talked with a lot of people about that. And they're like, well, I can do it. And my benefits are taken for all of ours, you know, there are networks where you save where there's.
It's a compliment.
They want to make one, like, you put it there, maybe ours that you.
I was like that one.
And, I think, I think you took a lot of decent amount of candy. Getting thousands of electric, for lotion, and stuff like that.
Yeah, and he just.
I mean, I've seen it, I've seen it.
Okay, actually.
Yeah, and to our, that's, um.
Stuff like that. They just, if you're, if you have a child.
I would bet you.
And that's.
Be careful. Start talking about shit, and then we. I mean. Oh, I'm sure.
I actually.
Now, now, city, it's just.
But then, uh, there are.
This.
And it's a little, it's starting, it's like, thanks to you, it's like, you go, I put a little call for it. Cause I find it's a little, there's some, like, always. The same thing, technically, people.
It's, it's up to the same, some cities, some, some. That's right. There's, there's no law saying, you know, there's, in some cities, you're gonna keep a right. And it's. If I don't read it, it's right. I went down, saw your friend Gina last night.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Does that stand out on church?
That's there, yeah, like that.
Partner, I thought that was. Yeah. Oh, okay, I wish I could work, I'm looking at it. The honest thing, you can, you can see.
It's very, very clutch to be your president.
I guess with this tech. That's not a real standard. I mean, all of the models are, you would, you know, give the energy, but. I can see the improvements.
I've done a lot of.
Oh, I, I agree.
Oh, yeah.
I would just, speaking of.
Right, they.
You don't submit.
It used to be.
She was saying.
They did, they did, they did, they did, they did.
I would like to watch. Oh, they like. They didn't have to.
Yeah, I don't have a number.
Okay.
Adia, yes, call, that you're on support.
Do you mind dropping me off?
That you got some work, please. I must be.
Yeah, the hair elves was talking about what the definition. We picked that up.
Good to see you.
I had a good weekend. Hey, Eric.
Yeah.
Are you?
Tonight? Uh, probably not tonight. Yeah, probably not, I'm. No, cause I gotta go to the grocery store too.
I mean, why am I having to, oh, it's not, it's the same, it has what it does.